Mary Carter Jackson, Lakewood. We're here tonight, as you know, about the K-8. And I've listened to all the comments that have gone forth and so forth. It would be a beautiful thing to end this right now, but nobody is going to leave here tonight until you say that this K-8 is smashed. We already know that you have another meeting scheduled for Friday morning. So therefore, I don't care what the meeting is about. See, too long you have been sweeping things under the rug and beating the public out of it. These people are here tonight, I don't care if they're Hispanic, I don't care if they're Russian or whatever they are, African-American or even the Hasidic community, I don't care. Children are children, and what your decisions are, there is no way... I understand at the last meeting you said that you talked to like 80% of the community. Well, this is the other 20% that you did not talk to, and I believe the voices of this 20%, and there's another 20 or 40% that never got word anyway. But nevertheless, I'm gonna say to you, Ms. Isma, you may be the hit person for this, but don't let your good be spoken of. If you think you were doing our children's good, how can you make that decision without talking to the parents, without talking to the community? No, you know, every one of you that sit on this board know the people that are at these board meetings, those that represent the community. And I can say, "You never talked to me, you never talked to none of these people in here." So how could you say, "Sit there and say that you talked to 80% of this community"? You don't even have to answer me because I can tell you why you talked to the community that you talked to because you know that they did not understand the full essence of this K-8 and they were not going to accept it. But Mr. Attorney, it's Michael.
Mr. Inzaloff.
Mr. Michael, Mr. Isma, was that what you pronounced?
That's good.
Okay, alright. You asked a question before about... Or somebody did, or Mr. Fink, somebody asked a question about stopping this meeting and having a community meeting and so forth. I think that's a great idea, but listen to me. But before you do that, we want to make sure that tonight, this thing is avoided. And it doesn't even come up again until we have that next meeting. If not, we're gonna sit here and hear all these people, all the reasons. Well, all these people have reasons, masterful reasons, why we don't think that this is gonna work. Well, we can give you those reasons tonight, but if that's just some of them, but that don't mean that we're gonna need them, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, first of all, the busing. Busing is one thing. If you do K-8 and you're putting the 7th and 8th graders on the same bus with the kindergartens and first graders and so forth, I read the plan that the silver laid out and so forth, it won't work. We know our children, if they are... The second reason is because they talk about... One thing that I personally dislike, there was a lot in there about the older children mentoring the younger children. It seems almost like you're giving the children your job. There are a lot of good teachers and the ones that... Teachers don't even want to come to this community anymore. Yes, I'm not being taken away because you tied the teachers' hands so much in this school.
Every teacher, every teacher now thinks like, "Oh, the children work for you."
Yeah. Could we... Mary Carter Jackson, Lakewood. Ella vino aquí esta noche para hablar contra el cambio que hicieron en la última reunión de kinder hasta octavo grado. Dice que cuando la quita hizo la decisión en la reunión pasada que no había suficiente gente, no sabían suficiente gente del cambio y no hacer y la junta no estaba incluyendo suficientemente la comunidad, el superintendente. Estorba no está recluyendo la comunidad en la decisión. Dice que, ella dice que el superintendente piensa que esto es lo mejor haciendo este cambio, pero no es lo mejor para los niños. También ella dijo que habló con suficientes personas que están de acuerdo con la sugerencia del abogado de tener una reunión, está bueno, pero debe hacer una decisión esta noche para cambiarlo para atrás de kinder de octavo hasta kinder al sexto grado. Después, el presidente de la junta, Mr. Inzaloff, hizo una pregunta: ¿Cuáles son las razones por qué no quieres el cambio a kinder al octavo grado? Ella dijo, primero, el transporte, que no debe tener niños de séptimo y octavo grado en el mismo bus de niños de kinder de primer grado. Segundo, que en la carta que fue la casa hoy de Luisa había demasiado mucho puesto para los niños de séptimo y octavo grado ser, que ella piensa que es responsabilidad de las maestras. Y después, Mr. Bueno preguntó para una tercera razón y que no está de acuerdo con el cambio a maestras, si no quieren venir al distrito. Hay mucho que está contra el cambio de kinder de sexto hasta kinder al octavo.
Alright, and now we say Reyna Rosado. Banseca, no, I apologize, Reyna Rosado. And so the next lady is ready, or the next person, Maricela Patron, be ready. Reyna Rosado, and next is Banzalo Patron, and next is Juan Esposito. Okay, now we go. You can start first.
¿Qué usted va a decir para los niños de muros para la escuela de Cristo? ¿Qué va a pasar con High School?
¿Qué va a pasar con la miras school, el building?
Cuando se van los niños de miras school para la escuela de 6, ¿qué va a pasar con ese...?
Con ese building.
Lo que yo creo que lo que no lo hice bien, pero lo que yo creo que es tan posible es que los niños niños que están en el jefe, en sexto, el año que tiene para estar en el séptimo. Por eso, el no, te dicen que si vivimos los niños en la ciudad de donde ellos viven. Ahora, muchos de los niños le saben que no viven muy cerca de la escuela. Estos estamos tratando de hacer eso, pero voy a hablar la... Los niños de sexto van a estar...
La escuela, no, la escuela intermedia va a ser una escuela de kinder a octavo. So van a ser, sí, el plan llama para que cinco escuelas sean no iguales con el mismo horario. Esto es lo que va a cumplir con el...
Pero estamos en las mismas, no sombreros. Porque si los niños pequeños van a ir para donde es miras school, están ya los grandes también cerca, los de high school. Y o sea todo va a estar revuelto, no, no les queda resentido.
El señor Tashna, que es el director del...
You know, I feel very left out, it seems like you two are on the two ways. What we're gonna do is we're gonna follow the rules here. You're gonna speak, we're gonna listen. So no worries, speak, have class, go.
Okay, otra pregunta. Yo no encuentro el sentido por lo mismo de que, de que Cristo, tengo dos niños de Cristo y la gran ya va a cumplir el seis, ya va a ir para el siete. No encuentro el sentido porque mi hija la pequeña me dijo que en el patio donde salgan los pequeños a veces se maltratan y traigan, necesitan a las maestras, no les dan atención. Le ha dicho mi hija que le ignora. Imagínense, los niños chiquitos no les ponen atención, menos les va a dar. Vale, todo va a aprovechar que...
Okay, this was Reyna Banzalo, Lakewood. She has two children that go to Clifton School. She started out with questions, "What are you going to do with the children at the middle school?" And the response was that the middle school will become a fifth K-8 school. She got a push stand, she thought that everything would be mixed up. She's not in agreement with K-8. She has two kids at Clifton, one is a sixth grade, one is a seventh grade, and one is smaller. The other comes home and tells her problems at school, on the playground. She tells the teachers, and the teachers ignore. If this is what's happening in the middle school, what will happen in the upper grades? If they have K-8, parents will be left out with the problem.
Alright, and then...
Throw the chair, please. I would just like to ask and give this over. What would be the repercussions from an educational administration if we did this policy here to have more meetings on this before you vote with this move? I know we already approved this, but if we would rescind this right now and wait another year, that real, you know, dialogue, meetings with the public and with the parents to get this, you know, in order where everybody is happy, what would that do to the position?
I believe it's a positive year of the same.
I'm sorry, please be quiet till we can...
What I said was, I believe it will be a heavy year of the same. The same has not produced results at the middle school. So I personally am against it, however, you're the board, and you represent and produce it. So those that, I vow to the board, as I have in the past.
You know, that answer, you bowing, reminds me of Egypt, okay?
I like Egypt.
What is your educational recommendation?
I said it, I wrote about it. I believe that the K-8 is one of the means, one of the means that we will be able to change and transform. Everyone has said, "We've gotta change the schools," but with this plan, that nobody wants it, but nobody else has come. I'm not criticizing anybody here. I am glad that you come, and I'm hoping that you go to your respective schools because one of the things that I did since I came here is in every school, there is a parent room for parents to get, have meetings, but really, it's very low. So if you are all going to go back, then I've accomplished a good goal. One of my goals was to make sure that parents are involved, and that way, it continues to take... Sí, thank you.
Okay, now we have Maricela.
Maricela Palozzo.
Okay, are you speaking Spanish? And then, okay, then we'll translate. Okay, it's your time.
Okay, buenas noches to todos. Yo estoy aquí porque soy la representante de la Asociación Cívica Mexicana. Me pago aquí para ayudar con la comunidad. Yo sé que muchos están quejando porque supuestamente no fueron editados. Yo quiero saber, ¿qué es esto, líderes que lo trajeron aquí? ¿Los habían editado antes a estas reuniones? No. Okay, esos líderes que se supone, se dicen líderes, deben de estarles informando de estas reuniones para que ustedes puedan participar. ¿Qué clase de líderes son? Sí, pero ¿por qué ahora?
Excuse me, we're gonna listen, then we can do other things, let's go.
¿Por qué no les informan? Cada vez se les manda una carta a todos los padres de familia donde dice que hay reuniones mentuales. Sí, eh, pero...
You don't look at her, up last to the board though.
Es muy importante que esos líderes que hoy los movieron atandos aquí, engañadamente, digo engañadamente, porque no les dieron toda la información. Los indignaron con lo del bar, les explicaron todo el programa, no solo explicaron, solamente les dijeron el problema del bar. Sí, no les dieron los, todo lo que necesitan que pueden tener. Sí, por eso quise estar aquí. Permiso, permiso, permiso.
Ah, la hold up, quiet, let her talk, let her talk, please. Oh, no, 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 escuche.
Es muy importante si estas personas hablan de esta manera, que dicen que quieren un cambio, ¿por qué no lo han hecho antes? ¿Por qué esperaron a la asociación cívica mexicana mover a todo esto para ellos levantarse ante todo? Y estar aquí metiendo...
Escuche, quiet. Ah, hold up, quiet. I don't know what she's saying, but let her say it first.
Quiero, quiero aclarar que no es nada en contra de nadie.
This is Morales, come down here. This is Morales. Can you two run me here with your pen and paper? You, insist, insist. Señorita, applause to them, not to them.
Okay. Okay, esto es muy importante, se recaudaron 1200 firmas. Estoy de acuerdo que hay oposición, pero que se informe a toda la gente con los dos y los contra. Okay. Permiso, sus líderes que los trajeron aquí le enviaron de haber formado la junta lo que...
¿Quiénes son los líderes? Somos maridos y familia.
I will say this right time. You speak to them.
Los líderes que supuestamente debían haberlos salido, quieren estar en contacto.
There's one thirty-four seconds left.
Porque que supone de ellos estar preocupados por la educación de sus hijos. Eso es, ellos deben de estar informados de todo lo que está ocurriendo aquí.
Okay, thank you, thank you, gracias, usted. Now I'm gonna get to the English, en class.
Her name is Maricela, she's representative of Mexican Civic Association in Lakewood. She's here stating that there are many that keep together, claiming about the change and not being informed of the previous meeting, of the change in place from K-8. She made a statement to the leaders, if they were two years, why were they not informed of the previous board meeting and why were they not informing their constituents? We were only told of busing, transportation issue. They were not fully informed of all the benefits, the programming fails. They're complaining, these leaders should be aware and be informing their constituents and comment to all the meetings.
Now, what I will say like this, we're now up to one, love, come here. If you can translate into Spanish and any other language. The purpose of speaking at this microphone is to tell the people here what you feel. We're not gonna get into G and E and Mexican and Puerto Rican and Jewish and Black and Greek.
La razón por estar hablando aquí en el comité es para dedicarlo a la junta y al superintendente las preguntas y comentarios.
Now, are you ready to do that? Look, go.
Buena noche, mi nombre es Juan Espinoza. Yo estoy aquí, soy padre de una niña, tiene cinco años y va en el kindergarten. Y no estoy de acuerdo con la decisión que han tomado. Primero, no es que no quisiera mostrar aquí, sino que nunca se nos notificó, nunca se nos dio saber que estaban tomando esta decisión. Yo me dio una sorpresa cuando mi niño me enseñó la hoja que iba a poder armar un bus con niños de 13 y 14 años. Y otra cosa que no me gustó, que mi niña tuvo un accidente en el autobús y se abrió la frente, yo fui a la escuela, y llegando a la escuela, yo hablé acerca del accidente con mi hija, y después pregunté acerca de lo que estaban haciendo del cambio, y la una maestra no me pidió dar información porque ya no estaban completamente seguras de cómo estaba haciendo este cambio. Entonces, yo me imagino que si todos estamos aquí, es porque tenían que haber tomado el fin de todos, y si la primera reunión que tuvieron, todos fueron todos, te crearon a favor.
Hold it, someone is smoking in here. Fuma, fuma, smoking, fume, no fume here.
Okay, mi pregunta es si la última reunión que tuvieron fueron dos o tres los que votaron a favor, y otras son más de del 80% que estamos en contra, ¿por qué tenemos que contener esto para otra reunión?
Okay, now we want to...
Juan Espinosa, Lakewood, he has a child five years old, a daughter. He was not informed in advance of the change, he's not in favor of the change from K-8. He received a letter from his child's teacher, and when asked, his child's teacher, and the teacher could not give him enough clear, specific information because he, she was not aware. He did not know about the last meeting, he does not know why this change is being made, he's not in favor of the change K-8.
Why, you can ask him why, try to think.
Por qué, por qué. Porque yo pienso que la razón es de que pongan los niños juntos de una a una, que formen una sola escuela, nueva solución. Otra cosa es que tiene que enfocar en los niños que están trayendo gang, que están haciendo cosas malas y hacer nuevos servicios para el área de esos niños.
What you said was school buses, we did say the school buses, gangs, right, gangs, not gangs.
Y las escuelas, que no pueden meter todos los niños en una sola escuela porque esa no es la solución.
And not all those children at those age ranges should be in the same school, that's not the solution.
Alright, let us not forget, we do have a rule, Carl. Don't we have a Carl thing called eleven o'clock something?
Eleven thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alright, now, Ken, thank you, thank you so much.
Michael.
I'm sorry.
I would still like to say something to the audience.
Alright, go right ahead, with the board president, Mr. President.
I still want to explain to everyone, the vote was taken. I understand your concerns, your concerns are now my concerns and every other member of the board. I do think we're going to have to have another meeting on this whole thing. I don't think, from what I'm hearing today, that the district did their homework and maybe we rushed into this. And we heard, well, yes, we heard one side. Today we're hearing completely different side, some people pro and con. I know it sounds redundant to you folks, and maybe you haven't been involved with Lakewood in a long time. I do believe that mistakes have been made by this board and the past administration. I don't want to be put in a position where I make a mistake based on not having all the information to make an affirmative, an affirmative decision. So what I would like to do is, I know Mr. Tiff brought it up before, I would like to make a motion to rescind the previous motion and, you know, make a meeting for Monday night and...
Monday night, you like now, Monday night?
Monday night, I said Monday night. And have everyone come down to the high school, pro and con, calmly, explain why you're against the move. Not that you don't like the idea of K-8, but have real explanation why, and then the full board will be able to vote again if they do believe it's the right thing for the children. This is all about the children. And I think that's what the board and the public needs to understand. We're not gonna all agree, but I do believe there's enough information from the audience today that I'll make the motion, so Mr. Tiff doesn't have to make the motion. How do I, can I say? I will second the motion.
And so we're not gonna hear for the rest of the poll.
Well, I just want to say one thing before we close, alright, you go to the...
Wait, hold it, you hold it, sir, Ken, you know, I like to hold it. So, Mr. Fink, you're saying you shouldn't hear these people. So then we're gonna hear these people, that's the obvious rules. Ken Sayda.
Ken Sayda, the president of the Puerto Rican Civic Association of Central New Jersey. I mean, it's hard because you keep asking the question that you don't get it, or you don't know what's going on, but let me ask you something. All the board members who are here right now, how many times have you initiated a meeting with the pastors and civic group leaders of this town? Raise your hand.
No.
What's the best time you've been with us? Raise your hand. Okay, so, let me tell you something. This board needs to start listening to this community. Because I don't know what part of no you don't understand and what part of yes you don't understand. Let me ask them again. Do you want getting that, a lot, yo, si o no?
No.
Getting that and saying si o no?
Si.
What part of that don't you understand?
I have a question.
I don't get it, let me, let me...
Now, there's no dialogue, Ken, Ken, let's take it down one notch, one notch.
I'm excited, because this is really, I see clients in my office dating and being out, people are suffering in this town. Now, let me ask you another question. The question is this. You asked, "What's the difference of the last meeting and this meeting?" This meeting has ten pastors from ten churches. This meeting has three civic groups. We have the Puerto Rican Civic, we have the South of LA Civic Association. We have business people here. That's the difference. The other group, and I'm gonna tell you this is very serious. The other group was, this, this, the whole thing about that group was masterminded by the superintendent and her own teachers to get together and prepare it down here. So, so, let me say this. We are the community, this is where we are. These are the people speaking out against this. We want to rescind it today. Lakewood's public schools are 80% almost despairing. This year, we've had a great, we've had great teachers and principals resign. The teacher morale is down after three years of this superintendent. I'm asking you, why is that happening? She continues to make decisions without the input of the stakeholders. We are the stakeholders of this town, in the Spanish community. And I'm taking it very seriously. It's absurd that our teachers have here to settle their current rights with this school. Now, the reconfiguration of the elementary schools to include 7th and 8th graders is a security and safety risk to our childrens in grades K-6. That was the straw that broke the camel's back. And let me tell you something. I, as president of the Puerto Rican Civic Association of Central New Jersey, I'm asking tonight for the resignation of Olivia Silver. I'm asking this board not to renew a contract in June. I'm asking this board not to renew her contract in June. I'm talking because it's serious.
Okay.
She was supposed to make one, not doing it.
So, do I want any of your dance taken away? So, 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 one, let me make one point. Are we here to listen, but I need facts to tell me why I could change my mind.
That's your job. That's your job. And I, to find out why.
Why?
Don't ask the parents, that's why you, why did you run to the school board? Why did you become a school board?
Mayor, president. Yeah, but Michael, one, give me a minute. Listen, listen. I'm here to listen, but if everybody gets up in a row, I don't like it, I don't like it, I don't like it. It's all the same, they don't give me reasons. They don't give, a cool reason, so it doesn't work. The boss, and I'm saying this wrong or right, but I'm not hearing specifics. I hear four minutes diet trade that she's, um, that, you know, when I include the sentence, and you're right. You are hundred percent right, but I just wanna know one thing. What, I, why are you a dance taken away? I don't wanna know.
Okay, I got it, but I'm gonna ask you another question.
There's no dialogue.
Why is it that this school district can accept thirty percent graduation rate from the high school? You answer that question.
We can't accept it. You don't, you cannot accept, and it's working. Hard to change that, we really are. We're hard to change it, and that's one thing you gotta, you gotta look at it there. That's one of, that Lydia wants to take the bull by its horn, and she wants the higher graduation rate. She wants to change the K through eight, it's to make the educational system better. It's not working now, you know that.
The board is not working.
I think the board doesn't work. Nothing to do with structure, that has to do with the policies this board, this board...
What policy? Okay, give me two, give me a policy that we don't like.
This is the law. We're talking about a policy.
And you're not explaining why it's ahead. You're not explaining what's wrong with that policy.
That's your job.
No, his job.
Your job is to figure out the board members.
No, 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 no. We, let me, let me explain something. I, I'm not a teacher, right? But we're hired to make sure that, to hire a superintendent that will bring the, bring the scores up, that will bring the graduation rates up. That's why we hired her. I'm not, I'm not an educator. I have to rely on her. Same way the governor, the mayor, all these people, they rely on the people they hire. Do you think the mayor of Lakewood takes care of the sanitation? He doesn't. He hires the people to run the city. Then he relies on his people to do the job. President Obama doesn't run the whole country. He hires the, he has a staff of the best. And he accuses them to give them the influence. We, Lydia, give me a hand, but if he's saying something wrong, tell me if that's all I'm asking. Don't tell me that you're upset. I am saying that you're upset, that we didn't prove the evidence. Hundred percent, that's first of all. I agree with that, but I just want to, here, if you want me to change my mind, like, how do you change my mind? Make my bold act, because I think probably you want the vote, or it's because there was something that's fundamentally wrong.
So let me ask you one thing. Are you willing? Are you willing? To me, this whole board, is this whole, oh, this is a question. I'm gonna answer the question.
Okay, okay, listen, guys, guys, so hold on.
I'm gonna ask a question. Is this exec, is this, is this school board willing to meet with our executive committee, religious...
Why aren't we to live here? Let's meet with the parents.
We've been trying to leave with people in this world, we can't even get a, we can't even get a meeting.
Here we are. I just wanna say something. No, there is a problem. This is law, called one of five people, you can't leave. You can't say, listen, I wanna leave, you know, listen. There's a really, it's a real problem. And people are told this up, wanted to be kicked, the whole board of nine, leaving the room there, you can't do that. So what happens?
One on one. One on one.
Five, that is a couple.
And that would meet, and that would meet with Mr. Tip's one on one. And that will meet with Mr. Silver.
It's, I'm telling you, there's another idea. You know, the idea is, these, these meetings, come more often. Get up at the mic, speak to ten, thirteen, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. I still wanna be with them, I would take the opportunity. There is this dialogue at this point, Mr. President. Every single month I'm giving you that authority, I never saw, I didn't know who you are. You're the president of some association, why weren't you here before? Ken. That's not true. That's absolutely not true. Ken, thank you. You wanna meet me tomorrow? Come to my office tomorrow, come to your office, what do you wanna do? Ken. Ken Singleton, you've been waiting your turn, come on down.
Can I translate? Ken Será, el presidente de la Asociación Puerto Guayaquiliana de New Jersey. Él está aquí y representa a todos sus miembros de su asociación. Está preguntando cuántas reuniones nosotros hemos tenido la junta. Cuántas reuniones hemos tenido la junta antes de hacer la decisión. No hablamos solisiete con la comunidad. ¿Cuál es la diferencia entre la reunión que tuvieron hace dos semanas y esta reunión? Aquí hay diez pastores y tres líderes de asociaciones que están representando, ah, la comunidad y la gente que no está de acuerdo con el cambio de Kinder hasta octavo grado. Porque estos cambios pasaron y la gente no estaba en el puerto, la comunidad no estaba en el puerto. Tienen que estar en puerto con todas las decisiones, con la comunidad está haciendo, ah, la sugerencia para cambiarlo esta noche porque no están de acuerdo con el cambio hasta Kinder hasta octavo grado. También está haciendo la sugerencia para sacar al superentendente. O que la junta no sigue con ella después de su contrato terminar en junio. Ah, nosotros cuando el presidente preguntó por qué no está de acuerdo, ah, nosotros se la dijo que no deben preguntar por qué ese trabajo de la junta parece lo mejor para la comunidad, para los niños. Ah, y entonces quieren una reunión con la junta de la asociación.
All right, Mr. President, I just said a very, Ken, the Singleton, just give me one moment, have a second, one moment, please. It's not personal. One of the, one of the teachers, one of our caring, concerned teachers, uh, actually had a good idea. There are students on here, of U-Rig, who wanna speak. So can we allow that to go out of turn in order to let the students speak, Mr. President?
Yes.
With that being said, well, hold it. If you are a student, estudiante, escriba el nombre over here. You now get a chance to speak if you sign your name here. If you, yes, come, come, come. Let's put all the, uh, tell them to stay at the line, please, nicely.
Todos los niños...
Lenny, you're still a student, I'm on, now be quiet.
Pueden ponerse en fila y nosotros vamos a permitir que los niños que firmaron hablan primero y fuera de lugar.
Only if you sign.
Solamente si firmaron...
My next board member. All right, so, we're going to let students speak who sign up.
Solamente niños que firmaron el papel de hablar.
Okay, hold on one second.
Speak, please speak.
All right. She is Casia Navarro, one fourteen and a half, third grade, number forty-four, go ahead. What grade are you in? You like the high school?
No. I have a little brother and cousins in elementary, and I want to go in their shoes. When I was in, when I was in the transition from going to seventh to eighth grade, I was so scared. I was in a, I was a thirteen-year-old stuck on a bus with seventeen, eighteen, and even nineteen-year-olds that were wa, that were talking about sex and even lighting up a block of weed in front of me and the bus driver without any disregard. Is this what you want for your children? Would you rather a thirteen-year-older with a six, with a, with a six-year-old or a thirteen-year-older with an eighteen-year-old that are already having sex and doing all these bad things? Enjoying gangs and peer pressing you and telling you, "Listen, if you don't jog again, I'm gonna beat you up." Is this what you really want? I mean, would you want your children to be with eighteen-year-olds and nineteen-year-olds on a bus? And I know this because I am in the school, and this is what I experience every day. So let's stop pretending like the pink elephant is not in the room because it is, okay? At least she's trying to do something. If Maricela wanted to come and change something, she would have brought his little group or whatever he has and made something and spoken to any of you guys and changed your minds, but he didn't. He stood here and brought these, he brought all these people to change their minds. But as reality, at least she's trying to do something when he didn't.
Are you pro, do you want K through eight?
Yes, I do.
Good, good. If I hear that, please, I want you to know the thing is, you want K to A's? You want?
Yes, I do want.
Why, why? You know, now give her a chance. Now that is rude. You only wanna hear what you say. You have a right to a K.
She don't make sense, she not making sense.
She doesn't like sex?
She not making sense. She's not making sense. She's not making sense, exactly.
I was, Michael. No, you know what, Carl? I have watched tonight that everyone is for the children. And now we have a children speaking, and you don't like what she said, and you act rude.
Michael, I totally agree with you, and if it keeps up, I think with your journey, we're gonna hold the meeting now.
You know what? Here's a student speaking. Be quiet. Now you go ahead, and you're getting more time.
So, why would you...
But why do you want it?
Because I truly don't want my six-year-old brother in ten, six years from now to end up in the high school or in the middle school and being seen as a criminal just because of this, he's gonna, he's gonna have to make because of peer pressure, just like my friend said. So, so why would we want?
Listen, can I ask you a question? Listen, listen, yes, you have a name. Do you want it to be K to A's?
Yes, I do want.
Wait, wait, wait. Can I talk to her? Listen to the choices. K to A or like it is now? Which do you like?
K to A.
So you like that? Now, you just said, I think, that you don't want your children, uh, siblings, your brother, sister to be with the sex, the, whatever you said. Whatever, I'm paraphrasing, I don't have a trash. So how does K to A help that?
Because they're with teachers that...
Oh, you want, you, who know that? You think continuity of teachers, having the same teacher, same building? That's what you're saying. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, keep on, keep it up. Keep it up, it's nice to see people, students. And now we're gonna have the next, we're gonna have the next. What is your name? Use the mic, oh, yes.
Casia Navarro, uh, ciento catorce de Third Street, and es una estudiante, um, grado once en el high school. Está de acuerdo con el cambio para Kinder hasta octavo grado. Tiene un hermanito que tiene seis años, y ella quiere que el hermanito está con, um, niños o maestros que no están queriendo a los niños. Y ella quiere que el hijo, el hermano menor de ella, ah, está con las maestras que él respeta más, que se quieren, ah, que se quieren más. Y ella está de acuerdo con el cambio de Kinder hasta octavo grado.
Okay. All right, we now have your name again on the speaking microphone. What number were you, do you remember? Come here for one second, please. Please. Oh, here, number twenty-six. This is you? Oh, I'm sorry, but it's that, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Daya Busma, fifteen, Clover Street. We have a very good officer, the local officer goes on. Oh? Okay. Daya Busma.